Everybody, um, is everybody here or where are we?
Well, they say if you're not here, you're somewhere else.
That's true.
That's right.
So I know, uh, Mr. Hopper's here, Mr. Bates is here.
I do not see Ezra or Mike Williams.
Ezra is there and I see David Lexi's name, so I believe he is also.
Okay, so Mr. Lexi's here and Ezra's here?
Yes. Well, maybe not.
That bearded guy is, uh, me.
I saw, I saw Mr. Pendleton and Mr. Hopper there like channeling these beards lately, but I thought I saw Ezra's name, but I could be mistaken.
They should have enough for a quorum.
Yeah, I do not see Mr. Hill, but you do have a quorum of.
And I logged in by phone.
Okay, so Linda, Ms. Gibson is here. Um, no Ezra, no Williams. Um, no, uh, Mr. Lexi, Mr. Hopper are here.
Yep.
And, uh, no Brad Pendleton or?
I'm here.
No, Brad and Bob are here. Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right.
Ezra says he can't get logged in.
Yeah, well, that's my problem. It, it, uh, the WebEx thing said I needed to upgrade my application and it won't let me, so. If IT is on the line, then maybe they could help us.
And obviously, Mr. Pendleton.
I've been trying all afternoon.
It looks like there probably recently was an update to the app and I think a lot of these iPads haven't been turned on. So probably haven't got the update to the app. Um, trying to see if I can force it to update it for you guys.
Since it. Okay.
They may not have been available when the update came out. So I'll see if I can try to rush it to you.
All right, well, we do have a quorum, so, um, and I have seven o'clock, seven oh three, actually. So we will call to order the meeting of the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, December the seventh. And, uh, I will, uh, open our meeting in prayer this evening. And before we pray, I'm sure most of you are aware, but today is, uh, remember Pearl Harbor Harbor Day. Uh, on this date in nineteen forty-one, Pearl Harbor was, uh, attacked in two thousand four hundred and three. Um, Americans were killed that day. That included sixty-eight civilians. So let's remember those as we go to prayer.
A date that will live in infamy.
Yeah, let's pray. Dear God, would you thank you for your mercy and your grace? God, I just pray that, uh, you would watch over our meeting this evening and Lord, I pray that you would help us as counselors to make, uh, wise decisions and give us wisdom in that. But we do pray and remember those who died on Pearl Harbor Day. We thank you for those that survived and continue, Lord, to fight for American, uh, uh, freedom. And God, I just pray that, uh, you would, uh, help us, Father, to always honor that and that, Lord, America would remain strong in the world today. Father, we do pray for our government, pray that you be with our mayor and, uh, city staff. We thank you for them. We do, Lord, pray for our own, uh, first responders and God pray that you would keep them safe and healthy. God, I pray you'd protect us all from the coronavirus. Lord, help us to honor you today and all that we do. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. All right, roll call.
Bates?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Dine?
Here.
Gibson?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Hopper?
Here.
Lexi? Pendleton?
Here.
And Williams?
All right, we do have a quorum. I show Mr. Lexi and Mr. Williams as not being here. All right, each of you should have received copies of the minutes from our, uh, regular meeting on November the sixteenth. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Um, motion, was that Mr. Hopper?
Sure.
I I can't see, I can't tell who's making the motion, so.
Dine.
Motion by Mr. Dine, second by.
I'll second it.
I'll second on Mr. Bates. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, then roll call on the minutes.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
And Pendleton?
Aye.
Minutes are approved with a vote of seven to zero. Uh, reports, Corporation Council.
The I D M semi-monthly report was posted to SharePoint. There is no litigation report at this meeting. We are working on an annual end of the year update and we should have it for the next time. If you have questions about the I D M semi-monthly, please contact me and I'll be happy to discuss them with you.
All right. Anything from the controller at this time?
Anything at this time?
Any committee or board reports? The RDC has not met since our last meeting. In fact, we meet tomorrow, so. Uh, any other committee or board reports? All right, moving on, I believe, uh, this, it's, at this time, we set aside an opportunity for members of the audience to address the council concerning items that are on the agenda. So if you're listening in tonight and wish to speak to the council about items on the agenda, please speak up. There's a five-minute time limit, uh, for each individual. Anyone, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Mr. Campbell, this is the mayor. I just want to acknowledge, um, Mr. Lexi is now online again.
Okay. All right, good. Welcome, Mr. Lexi. All right, anyone else in the audience? All right, hearing none, moving on. Ordinances and resolutions. Notice of intent to consider ordinance number twenty forty-one.
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map adopted by reference and unified development ordinance number twenty twenty-nine. Proposed rezoning of approximately two hundred and thirty-one point six-five acres located north of Whitley Road and west of Honey Creek Road. Green Land Holdings LLC and Ethan Jordy, K and T Zering Farms, Inc., properties sponsored by Dine.
Do I have, do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Motion by Mr. Dine, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion or someone here to present on ordinance twenty forty-one?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you want me to go ahead and move the screen?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Munoz, my address is three four oh five Tallyhoe Drive, Kokomo, Indiana. Um, I'm the Antifa manager for Arbor Homes, here to present tonight regarding Scottsdale. Anyone see my screen?
No.
No. But I'm sure the people there can.
Yeah, uh, those of you that have the WebEx, can you see it?
I can't.
Affirmative.
Yes.
Sure. Thank you. One second. Apologize. Screen is locked. Apologize. Give me one second. There we go.
All right.
So, um, one of the fifteen nine regarding Scottsdale. As you can see here, this is an overlay map showing the area which we're discussing. Everything within the yellow or the boundaries of the project. Uh, we have Honey Creek Road east, Whitley Road to the south. You have Stay Road one thirty-five to your west. This is the existing mapping app as it currently stands. The property question is all currently zoned as agricultural. We have residential or west. You have multifamily and medium lot residential to north. And you have, uh, what I believe to be agricultural to the east. Is the proposed development plan, again, is approximately two hundred and thirty-two acres, currently zoned as ag. Our homes is proposing medium lot residential underneath your new zoning ordinance. Total density for the project will be approximately two point two acres, units per acre. Total homes will be five hundred and five, and this will be divided into two, uh, communities within this. Uh, first being that those you see in the tan, which would be our normal Arbor Homes product, our traditional family, single family. And those that you see in the bluish purple will be our silver which we are committing to all of those lots meeting or exceeding your current or your new residential large, large lot zoning standards. Development, uh, because of the size of this and the scope of it, preservation of open space is one of the key things that I'm trying to focus on within this development. Roughly seventy-one acres of open space in that, which is about thirty-one percent. Of that includes two points, roughly two point seven miles of used trail. We have landscaped disc golf course, as you can see, that winds through that larger Central Park area. We will be providing a pool and a pool house, a dog park, a playground area within that section. The gap up to the northeast of that large Central Park will be the dog park in that general area. That playground that will include a gazebo and picnic area to the southwest. We'll also be including a pool and a house within that area as well. So our traditional single-family product, which was, is being proposed for the residential medium lot. Actually, that in the original plan in the tan has eleven different floor plans, ranging from single between thirteen hundred and thirty-two hundred square feet. And we, this is the same product we've been successfully building for over twenty-five years in the central Indiana area. Those homes that you saw blue will be our Silverthorn product, which is our step up or second time buyer. This is a buyer that's got a little bit more discerning qualities in what they're looking at within a home. It's a semi-custom single-family product. There's twenty unique floor plans within that that range from single to two-story as well. Range between sixteen hundred and thirty-two hundred square feet in that section. And again, affordable customization is something we focus on within our Silverthorn homes. It has increased interior amenities, enhanced architectural details to the exterior as well. One of the things that makes us different home buyers, uh, our home builders, excuse me, is our new state-of-the-art design center that we recently opened in two thousand and eight. It's a thirty-nine hundred square foot design area professionally designed by staff that takes each and every buyer through the design and build process. What makes that different in most cases is that a lot of builders have all gone to what they call color palettes, which means, uh, whatever you're choosing in the way of cabinets will dictate your flooring. Whatever you're choosing in the way of exterior colors on your house will dictate your shutter colors, your front door color and trim color. Uh, we allow all of our buyers to be able to make those decisions as they see fit, both in the Arbor line and the Silverthorn line. Just that this gives them the opportunity to look and feel and see on a lot larger scale what they're going to be buying and how that is all going to fit together. It's drastically improved our, uh, customer satisfaction and most of the buyers that we have tell you that this is, uh, was one of the best parts of with Arbor Homes. I have a couple of slides here that we'd like to show you regarding, um, the market within central Indiana. As you can see here, it shows you an index of top thirty-three communities within, or top thirty-three markets in the nation. This is a study that was done by John Burns Real Estate Consulting. Of those thirty-three, Indianapolis and the metro area currently has the fastest falling supply of available, uh, housing stock. Those thirty-three top markets. Here we go. Focuses on our, your area in the Greenwood area. Brought up in the townships that incorporate the Greenwood area. Housing stock with Greenwood or within a market that is sustainable is roughly about seven months, according to the MyBarn, MyBarn, the market studies. Currently within the Greenwood area, you're at roughly point six or half of a month of stock within the Greenwood area. From the other side, stock available housing continues to fall as well. We believe this is consistent with your comprehensive plan and as been pointed out in the staff report, we believe this is a great transition from the commercial hundred, uh, hundred and thirty-five, zero hundred and thirty-five corridor, working your way towards Honey Creek. First housing options, this isn't going to be just one housing type or model for all of this entire project. It'll actually be two different ones, both the Arbor and the Silverthorn line. With that, providing roughly sixty to seventy different elevations per line within those twenty-three different floor plans that we will have double. Again, that also varies with brick, siding styles, additional square foot. One thing we will, we want to make sure that, uh, everyone is aware of. We have voluntary link up within the written commitments we provided that both the Arbor and the Silverthorn line will be hardy and brick and stone. And there will be no vinyl permitted on the siding. Again, this proves a quality development because of size and scope of this, we are able to provide a lot of amenities, a lot of character within that. Something a little bit unique to the area. In a case like this where you have something of this size, it provides the opportunity for a lot of connectivity and, um, it exceeds standards normally be if you had multiple different buyers and multiple different builders come in and build on twenty acres here, twenty acres there, the connectivity in the suburbs just wouldn't be as consistent if you're doing it on a larger scale like this. And multiple different amenities and park areas, a lot of enhanced landscaping along the Honey Creek and the Whitley roadside. And again, preserving home values with the, the durable materials we plan to use and these extensive warranties we have. We really feel like this is going to be a great opportunity to showcase the new standards within your UDA. We are agreeing to meet all of the architectural standards and actually are exceeding those standards that you guys have set in place uh, by agreeing to no vinyl on that as well. Really going to be something we believe is going to be a great opportunity to showcase standards and a great project.
All right, uh, before we move on, just let the record show that Mr. Williams has joined the meeting. And anybody have any questions for Mr. Munoz?
Uh, just one, uh, Mr. President, or actually two, uh, for the, uh, the thirteen hundred square foot, uh, building, what's your price point? Or maybe what's the price point for any, uh, particular, uh, home itself?
Sure. So we believe that within this subdivision at the, the traditional Arbor product somewhere in the mark, um, this is going to be kind of comparable to what you have Cherry Tree. Cherry Tree is currently averaging in that area, but do want to make sure to note that if somebody wants a, a larger home on a basement, it can really, um, add up in value and quality. And we do have one home that within that subdivision that is actually appraised above four hundred. On the Silverthorn side, we believe we'll be averaging somewhere in the three seventy range on those.
Uh, what did you, uh, my next question, the only next question I have is the, uh, your build out. Uh, I know you can only speculate what your build out, uh, time would be for, uh, your first, uh, subdivision there as well as the second.
Sure. So we believe that we'll probably, if everything goes smoothly with plotting and the construction plan process, we believe we should start construction on our first homes, probably the beginning of twenty twenty-two. We're expecting from that point on about an eight to a ten-year-plus build out.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Mr. President, I just wanted to let you know that I am here. I had to call it on my phone. This is Dave Lexi.
All right, yeah, um, Ms. Coons, uh, let us know earlier that, or I'm sorry, the mayor let us know that you were here, so we appreciate that. I know, and in case, uh, I had to call it on my phone and I did, I finally switched to my personal computer and it worked, so my iPad still doesn't work, but, uh, my personal computer does, so.
I'm here on my phone. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And, uh, in case, uh, anyone missed it, Mr. Williams is also here, so. So all nine of us are here now. All right, any, uh, questions then for Mr. Munoz?
I do have one, Mr. Campbell.
Yeah.
I think one to start with anyway. So going back to your picture, uh, or Silverthorn uh, house. I don't know, anyway, was the Silverthorn on your presentation? It was mostly that one. Um, mostly hardy plank with a little bit of brick, whereas the Arbor home, at least the front elevation was mostly brick and then a little bit of hardy plank on the second story. Which generally in my mind, those two are flipped as far as which one's the higher end and which one's the lower end model, plus the other one had a three-car garage and this one only has a two-car garage. So just thinking about, uh, I think the closest Silverthorn to us is Windcrest over off of Whitley Road. Um, and I've driven through that neighborhood quite a few times because I've got some friends that live over there. Um, none of the houses remind me of this particular house here. Uh, most of them are all brick or stone. Um, some of them even brick or stone on both top and bottom. Um, so just trying to figure out, um, of course, with our new rules, um, what are the houses going to look more like this? Um, or do you think they'll look more like the Windcrest? And I, and I seem to recall, um, when you guys took over, because that was supposed to be a custom home lot that you, um, one of your commitments was that they would be eighty percent brick or stone from what I recall somewhere in that neighborhood, so.
Yeah, that's correct. Um, Wind, Windcrest is when we bought down lots in and took over, uh, an existing subdivision that already had commitments. And so that's one of the reasons why you see a lot more of the brick on those elevations. The one that we have shown here is actually a farmhouse style and we have four new floor plans that we just released this year, which all have newer elevations on each one of those. And we try to stay consistent with the architectural style of each one of those elevation types. So we have farmhouse, we have craftsman, we have Tudor. And then we have some of our traditional styles as well. It's actually a farmhouse that has increased architectural features such as multiple flooring types. I know it's kind of hard to see from the all-white image, but two of those gables have a vertical siding or a batten board siding. Um, others have the horizontal encases on the craftsman. You'll have decorative columns as well as brick wrapped columns. And so although it doesn't appear that it has as much brick, a lot of times those also have the wainscot that goes all the way around. So it's all consistent with the style of that house in those elevations and keeping with the architectural features that are on it. So it will, we, as I stated earlier, we are not asking for any variances from your architectural details that you guys have within there. And I know there's multiple paths that you can take for an elevation to make it work. And so we have agreed that we will meet at least one of those paths on all of the elevations that we have. And again, have agreed that every home within the subdivision will, uh, have hardy plank instead of vinyl.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, hearing none, then we will do roll call on ordinance twenty forty-one.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine? Mr. Dine?
Aye.
Gibson? Hill?
Aye.
Hopper? Lexi?
Aye.
Pendleton?
Aye.
And William?
Aye.
If I counted right, uh, ordinance twenty forty-one passes on a vote of nine to zero. All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Munoz.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. All right, first reading, resolution twenty twenty-five.
A resolution declaring certain area within a treaty agreement and economic revitalization area and qualifying certain real property improvements for tax abatement and setting the time and place for a public hearing, LLSC Properties LLC, five Campbell and Hopper.
Have a motion?
So.
Motion by Mr. Hopper, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dine. Any discussion on resolution twenty twenty-five or anyone wishing to speak to this? And any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call, resolution twenty twenty-five, first reading.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson? I can't hear Ms. Gibson. Can anyone else hear her?
I, I cannot.
Should I go, just move on?
Yeah, move on.
Okay. Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Pendleton?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
And Bates?
Aye.
And Ms. Gibson, are you here? All right, we'll say this passed on a, uh, first reading, resolution twenty twenty-five passes first reading on a vote of eight to zero. Uh, second reading, ordinance twenty forty.
An ordinance amending the twenty twenty-one salary ordinance, Common Council Ordinance number twenty thirty-one to add full-time assistant position to the Human Resources Department sponsored by Dine and Gibson.
Have a motion?
Still moved.
Motion by Mr. Dine, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion, ordinance twenty twenty-four? Hearing none, roll call, ordinance twenty twenty-four, second reading, uh, twenty forty, I'm sorry, second reading.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson? Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Pendleton?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Are they voting now?
Bates?
Aye.
Let's check on him. Bring it up again in just a minute. I'm waiting to see, but they didn't.
All right, I, I'm sorry, I hear conversation. It's not part of this discussion. If you could mute your microphones, we would appreciate it.
Sure.
Right. Um, ordinance twenty forty then, uh, if I hear it right, passes second reading on a vote of, uh, eight to zero. I did not hear Ms. Gibson. Ms. Gibson, are you here? All right, we'll move on, uh, new business introduction to new ordinances and resolutions, ordinance twenty forty-two.
An ordinance amending Greenwood Municipal Code nineteen ninety-three, chapter two, article eight, section two eighty-two, qualified retired employees and spouses group health insurance to better utilize disability benefits sponsored by Campbell.
And someone here to speak to that?
Yes, hi, this is Pierre.
Yes, hi, this is Pierre Fox, if you can hear me.
Yes.
Thank you. The nature of the ordinance was to amend the retiree plan for disabled.
I'm sorry, Mr. Fox, but if you, I know you stated your name, but you could tell us your address and who you're with?
Yes, I'm with McGriff Insurance. I'm the broker for the city of Greenwood on their employee benefits. My address is 9539 Timberline Court, Indianapolis, Indiana, 46256.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fox.
Thank you. So the, the cause for this ordinance was the health insurance plan that is currently offered to retired employees who are disabled. We wanted to amend the ordinance simply because Medicare, under the Medicare secondary payer rules that are put forth by the Social Security Administration, pay claims first for retiree plans. And given the city has a retiree plan, and if an employee was disabled in that plan, it is in the financial best interest of the city to have, have Medicare pay first on those claims for employees who are considered disabled. So the idea here is not to kick anyone off the plan, but in order to obtain the retiree plan, if you're retired due to disability, is that you have to apply within 60 days to, for social security disability in order to help defer the cost of the plan to maintain benefits on the plan. So it's a little complex in the regulations, but these rules that are set forth through Medicare are pretty clear, who pays first and who pays second. An employee certainly would be entitled to keep the retiree plan if they were disabled all the way through normal retirement age. That is something all retirees would, that would not change for all retirees. That, those benefits would be the same as active employees. Under the current cost, retirees pay half the specified cost for the, for the plan.
All right, any questions for Mr. Fox?
Mr. President, I was going to ask the question, but I think Mr. Fox just answered it there with his last statement concerning what the obligation of the city was concerning premiums. Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Fox, I know there's at least one person on disability that I'm familiar with. This will not affect his coverage or him at all, other than he'll have to apply for the social security part of it?
Correct. So if he applies for Medicare disability, which is the, the health component of Medicare disability, I think in the ordinance, there's some, some compensation or for legal expenses to help them navigate that process. So he still could retain the coverage through the city if he, if he, if he likes, at the same premium that all retirees are covered. Now, he would just have that secondary cover that pays first.
Will you or will HR explain this to him, or have they already explained it to this person?
We will, we will help explain this to him with also legal counsel to help navigate him through the, the process, which is, can be a difficult process, but we can, we can both aid and assist him in that.
Thank you. I just want to make sure he would be looked out for. Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Fox? All right, hearing none, moving on then. Thank you, Mr. Fox. I appreciate your time. Moving on to ordinance 2043.
An ordinance to amend the text of Greenwood Municipal Code, Chapter 8, Traffic and Parking Regulations, Article 2, to amend Section 8-8 prohibiting truck traffic on certain streets to include portions of Allen Road and Griffith Road sponsored by Williams.
And I think I can probably address this. This is a request to prohibit semi-truck traffic on the portions of Griffith Road that are inside our jurisdiction and on Allen Road from Griffith Road east to Combs Road. So with all the, that's the area where the residential subdivision is and Griffith Road is not at this point ready for truck traffic. So that's what this is about. Any questions about that?
Yes, Mr. President, just a clarification or just an explanation about this would be something once, you know, this is approved by the council that would be done in-house as far as signage is concerned. And what would the, what would the signage say?
I'm assuming there will be a sign that says no trucks, but we're, we have asked, I think the ordinance asked the city to put up sufficient signage to make sure everybody is aware. I, I know in the preparation of this, we talked with Mr. Williams and talked with Skanel developers out there, and they put in the extra road Stacy Way to help reduce some of the traffic on Allen Road. And at Allen and Graham, they're putting in turn lanes, dedicated turn lanes for the trucks. But from Combs Road east over to Griffith Road, there will be no entrances or exits onto Allen Road or into the industrial area along those roads. And so, and that's where the residential houses are. And that was one of the complaints when we approved the last rezoning was truck traffic out there. So this, you know, we'll do our best to try to prevent that. And just to be clear, you know, we're not going to park a policeman out there. But if there becomes a problem, at least gives us a tool to help stop the truck traffic in that area, so.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions about that at this time?
Mr. Campbell, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I've been online and I've been voting, but you haven't been able to hear me. So I hung up and I called in again.
Okay, and with that, we assume you voted, or how did you vote on resolution 2020?
I voted, I voted in favor of all of them.
Okay, so just to let the record show, then on resolution 2025, passed first reading on a vote of nine to zero. And ordinance 2040, passed second reading, also a vote of nine to zero. All right, thank you, thank you, Ms. Gibson. All right, moving on then, yes, I'm sorry.
This is Terry McLaughlin. Sorry for the interruption, but I did want to let the council know that today we received some phone calls from homeowners that live on Griffith Road that do not live in the city limits, but they actually own semi-tractors, that their tractors are parked at their residence, have been for some time apparently. And we also have some other heavy equipment that is parked within the city limits, is what I was told. So I haven't been able to verify that, but the one outside was verified, just for your information.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. All right, anything else?
So, yes, Mr. President, is that saying that they may need to utilize the road from time to time? And will we need to make some kind of amendment to this so that can, that can take place if they're in the city limits?
I believe they do not live in the city limits. And if it's the houses, I'm thinking there's about three houses just north of Allen Road on the west side of Griffith, where there, that are not, I'd say just north there a little bit, they're, they're not inside the city limits. There's a portion of that road that is not in city limits. And we're, but we're just banning truck traffic on the portion that is in the city limits. I believe the county did something out of that area too, but I'm not positive what their restrictions are. Obviously, we can't ban truck traffic on, on streets that aren't within our jurisdiction.
Right.
Yeah. All right, any, any other questions or comments on ordinance 2043? All right, ordinance 2044.
An ordinance amending the Greenwood Fire Department Merit System to address the initial term of one common council commission appointee and to correct typographical errors sponsored by Dine and Gibson. I prepared this ordinance and brought it to the fire chief's attention. As you know, you passed the fire merit system and amended it to address some operation specific things. And one of those amendments was you changed the number of appointments the council had. It originally was the mayor had two to the fire merit commission and the council had one. You changed that so that the council had two appointments and the mayor had one. There should have been an additional change regarding one of your initial appointees having only a two-year term. We missed that correction and didn't change the word mayor to common council. And we found a couple of other typos. The word in was left out in the section that was amended on, you don't have to be a U.S. citizen, but you have to legally be able to work in the United States. It just said legally work the United States. And we found another section header where the punctuation should have been a period and it was a comma. And so the active members, we've advertised the election for the referendum, for them to vote to approve the system. That will be Monday, December 21. We would like to make these amendments so that it's clean and tidy and present it to them. It has to be presented to the members at least one week prior to that election. So I prepared this and suggested that we request a suspension of rules through second reading so we can tidy up these oversights and get the final language so we can distribute it to the active members for their referendum on December 21.
All right, do you have a motion to suspend the rules in ordinance 2024, 2044 through first reading? Motion by Mr. Bates, second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion? All right, the roll call on suspension, ordinance 2044.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Pendleton?
Aye.
Williams? Mr. Williams? Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
And Dine?
Aye.
Ordinance 2044, rules are suspended through first reading on a vote of nine to zero. Do you have a motion on first reading?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bates, second by Mr. Dine. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, ordinance 2044, first reading.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Pendleton?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
And Gibson?
Aye.
Ordinance 2044 passes first reading to vote of nine to zero. Do you have a motion for suspension through second reading?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bates, second by Mr. Williams. Oh, it wasn't you? Oh, motion by Mr. Dine, second by Mr. Williams. We'll do that. Any discussion on suspension? Hearing none, then roll call on suspension through second reading, ordinance 2044.
Hopper? Lexi?
Aye.
Pendleton?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
And Hill?
Aye.
Ordinance 2044, rules are suspended through second reading, voted nine to zero. Do you have a motion on second reading?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Gibson. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Uh, second, I'm sorry. I'm trying to, second by Mr. Dine. We'll go with that.
There you go.
When you all speak, a little box appears around your picture. So that's, I'm, I'm trying to figure that out. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, ordinance 2044? Hearing none, roll call, second reading, ordinance 2044.
Lexi?
Aye.
Pendleton?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
And Hopper?
Aye.
Ordinance 2044 passes second reading, nine zero. All right, thank you, everyone. Resolution 20, 2026.
The resolution of the common council of the city of Greenwood, Johnson County, Indiana, approving and consenting to the sale and assignment of the city of Greenwood, Indiana, Economic Development Subordinate Tax Increment Revenue Bonds of 2019 Series A Echelon One Project sponsored by Hopper.
Anybody want to talk to us about this one?
Well, I suppose if nobody actually wants to, yeah. Basically, the Garrett companies are selling the apartment complex they, to the J.C. Hart Group, I think is who it was. And so legally, we just have to do some work to make that happen. Because we, we back the bond, so we have to make sure that J.C. Hart can buy it. Okay, I think that's it in a nutshell. I see Mr. Stone kind of wants to get in there and say something, but I think that's the gist of it.
No, no, you, you said it well. I would just, I would just add that we, you know, we asked, we asked about this and it's, it was made a condition of sale. And essentially, as you know, the developer back bond essentially serves as a, as a way to offset real estate taxes paid. So as the incoming buyer, they, they want to realize that benefit that was originally, that was originally approved. So what they're essentially asking is a pass through of the bonds and a pass through of those agreements. So yeah, that's all I was going to add, Councilman Hopper.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stone. Any questions at this point? All right, hearing none, moving on, miscellaneous business. This is an opportunity we set aside for members of the audience to address the council concerning matters that are not on the agenda. So if you're here tonight, wish to speak to the council, please speak up and state your name and address for the record. And there is a five minute time limit for individual. Anyone?
Mr. Campbell, this is Rick Jones.
Yes.
I just wanted to let the council know that part of the problems we were having with the iPads tonight was an updated version of the WebEx app had not been pushed to your iPads. So when you go home this evening, if you could always just leave your iPads connected to power and leave them on, then that will give us access to them to be able to push the updates.
All right, appreciate that.
Thank you.
And Rick, since mine is my own personal one, will that work on mine as well, or will I have to bring it in?
We will not be able to push to you, but if you bring it in, we'll be able to update it. We'll also take a look at giving you some secondary device again, because you sometimes have problems with your Wi-Fi at home.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Anyone else in the audience that's addressed the council at this time? All right, moving on, council, miscellaneous business.
Mr. President, I would just like to say I appreciate the street department. I know the last time we had a meeting, I asked about Liam and Leaf removal and pickup and more, of course, in the leaf pickup because of this time of the season. And they've been very good in removing, you know, especially in the older neighborhoods like where I live, you know, a lot of trees. So there's a lot of leaves that has been removed by our street department. So on behalf of the community in which I live, I'm sure anyone else in our city, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's a great service. Thank you, Mr. Bates. Anybody else? All right, moving on, other miscellaneous business corporation council?
We have none.
Anything from the controller?
Nothing.
Anything from the mayor?
I would just ask once again that you all make sure you come in and.
I would just ask once again that you all make sure you come in as soon as possible and sign the resolutions and ordinances so that they can move through and be especially passed on to the fire department for their approval.
Yes, since of that, let's all get in as quickly as possible, and that includes me. So I will get there as soon as I can. All right, if that's all, then we are adjourned. I appreciate it, everyone. You have a good evening. Stay healthy. Leave your iPads on.